Thank you.
Okay. Common Core Next Generation. Bob, do you need to set up? And Eric?
I also noticed we didn't have handouts. Yep. So cool.
These are the most bright ones. Yeah. Well, hi there. Well, Bob is setting up because he does have some things to set up. I just want to let you know that I'm here to introduce him. My name is Eric Brunden. You may know me from the annual Science and Engineering Summit. I know we're doing, we're increasing summits. That's one that we've been doing for a while. And I'm going to be introducing this young man behind me, Bob Barbosa. I know he doesn't look young, but when he starts talking, you'll realize your mistake. And what he's bringing is, he's tapped into some amazing resources for students. He's already worked with students at CAMHS and now at McBride. And he's brought in what is an industry-developed model for actually solving practical problems or looking for innovations, thing called Tiger Teams. And he's set these things up. And he's been working with our students successfully and is going to be sharing about that. The reason I think this is important is because it kind of directly aligns with the major shifts that have happened in our system, actually across the nation, with Common Core and Next Generation science standards, where the entire point is to retool education so that we're helping students build self-efficacy, not just a background knowledge, but actual hands-on experience with things. And so for NGSS, what this means is we're teaching students to work and to think like scientists and engineers. And so this is giving them an opportunity to do that. Instead of just handing them what we've done in the past, what as a classroom teacher I had done way too much of, which is explaining to kids, here's a principle of science and let me show you examples. It's giving kids the opportunity to look at actual phenomena or look at real-world problems and say, what's going on here? And then coach them through the process of the work style, the workflow, and the thinking processes that will allow them to figure out the phenomena or allow them to come up with reasonable solutions to problems and novel solutions. So that's what we're aiming at. And I think you'll find that Bob Barbosa has tapped into some amazing resources and creating some wonderful opportunities for our kids to do just that. And he's getting close.
Well, I know you've presented to us not too long ago about seventh-grade science standards and how they've changed. And that was very helpful in understanding how we're growing and changing.
Yeah, thank you. Ready to go?
Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you very much. Well, all I can say is, it is easier to get to Mars than it is to get to the district office. Today, it was a nightmare on the freeway. Absolute. And then when you took the side streets, it was a nightmare on the side streets. I'm just so happy to be alive. Thank you for having me. Okay. Before I say one word, I have to thank Dr. Felton Williams for many things, but for being such a great listener. When you get a guy like me working outside the box, it's hard to find a great listener. And not only did he listen, he really, really helped me get going. So I want to thank him from the bottom of my heart even before I get started. I have something special for you today. One, I'll do a presentation and then I'll have a humanoid robot do a presentation. And then I will have the first or the second Long Beach Unified School District NASA Tiger Team address you. And I told them when I was teaching them this summer, and this is the pre-game show, the presentation hasn't started. I told them, one day, you will be presenting before Congress. And I taught them what to do on that day when they have to ask for several billions of dollars. So it was so nice to have a board member be so generous right off the bat. It set a great tone with these young ladies. But one day, they will have to go to Congress and do such a presentation. So they worked on that. And so to you, this is like going to Congress for these young ladies today and speaking before you and trying to convince you that their efforts are worthwhile. Okay, moving right along. First of all, I am an educator. I have a K-12 credential. I have an administrative credential. I worked for the Paramount Unified School District. And I basically worked from K to 12, and then I retired. And then when I retired, I said, this is a good time to get started teaching. After 30 years of looking things over, I think I might have it by now. That's how difficult teaching is. So I'm really enjoying teaching. And this week, I was teaching these young ladies. And I'd come in at 8:30 in the morning and then be, you know, I looked on my watch and I'd say, oh, no, it's 2:30. It's time to go home. That's how the days were going by. And I have to thank you because you did such a good job preparing these young ladies to work with me in a Mars simulation Tiger Team, which I'll explain. So, basically, I am a design engineer. People come in with a problem, and I'm supposed to design the solution. So that's what I do. And then I'm an astro-sociologist. I actually have a BA and BS in sociology. And I added the astro part as I started doing postgraduate work in the space industry. So an astro-sociologist is a person that has to work with profoundly gifted people to solve incredible problems. And that's what NASA does. That's what JPL does and many of the different organizations. So I said, wouldn't it be cool if I had a kid's version of that? And I could model what real Tiger Teams do? And that's what I did with this class. So you've heard of STEM, and then someone came in and talked about STEAM. And now I'm here talking about steamed with the D at the end, plus-plus. We got the D from General Bolden from NASA. He wants us all to get into design. And I said, well, that's fantastic. So here we go. Our theme is the Occupy Mars Learning Adventure. We're using humanoid robots. Pretend I was going to Mars, and I was taking these two robots with me. One robot memorized everything that I had to offer as far as education is concerned, and the other one was my medical doctor. So with those two robots and myself aboard the spaceship, we're on the eight-month journey one way to Mars. People will say to me, why Mars? We've got homeless people. We have all these different problems. Why are you spending billions of dollars going to Mars? Well, I could talk to you all afternoon on all of the benefits of Mars. When I walked in the front door, I looked up on the wall, and you had a heart defibrillator up on the wall. That's there because of the moon mission and the Mars mission. We just recently had a ton of fires in California. We actually have the equipment for a fireman to breathe for 24 days straight through a system that's designed for Mars. In addition to that, the clothing, so no matter how badly they were trapped in the fire, they could completely survive. So we've worked all that out. We've got the engineering. We're ready to go. When I came here today, I pressed a button on my garage door opener, and the garage door opener went up. That garage door opener went up because of the research that we did going to the moon. So it goes on and on and on and on. Recently, I went to the Kaiser Permanente Hospital, and I was picking up my medication. And they usually say to you, would you like to speak to the pharmacist? So I said, yes, I would like to speak to the pharmacist. So the pharmacist came up, and I said, has anybody ever done research on this particular medicine in zero gravity? And the cost of pharmacist said, I shouldn't have came to work today. So she said, what do you mean? I said, there's a ton of breakthroughs you could make in the area of chemistry and pharmacy if we just did our research in zero gravity, but it's so expensive. So needless to say, I've got great reasons for why we should go to Mars. So when I work with my students, I say, we don't have to wait for NASA to call us to do our research. Here's the way it works. You see all those layers up there? Those are the layers that are piled one on top of another to allow a spacesuit to let you go in the most extreme temperatures on this earth. And if you would like to win a $450,000 prize, all you have to do is come up with one more layer to put in that list and fulfill NASA's complaint. They're complaining that the suits are too rigid. So they want materials where the suits are not rigid, and you have all of that protection. Well, in the city of Long Beach, the two biggest expenses are probably the fire department and the police department. So we have the technology to help those firemen, but it would be extremely expensive. So these young ladies get to hear about all of these different kinds of problems that need to be solved, and we have great conversations. So here's the situation on Mars. I have to tell these young ladies that our plan is to land on the moon, one of those moons. Phobos and Deimos, we're going to land on one of those moons, and guess what? The gravity situation is really bad, so you may have to anchor yourself down. So I'll send these young ladies off on a homework assignment, put on my desk on Tuesday morning, the gravity situation on those two moons. And these young ladies go off and do homework all through the night, come back the next day with answers. So to save us a little time, I'm going to move through these slides. We decided to create our own space company so when they fill out a resume, they could say, when I was a junior in high school, I worked on a special Tiger Team for the Barbosa Space Center, and I was working with calculus and humanoid robots. That's what I'd like them to be able to say when they go and apply for a job. So we set it up that way. So we told them that they would receive a fellowship. All expenses were paid. So that meant I didn't have to go to the school principal and ask for any money. I just said, I would like to give a fellowship to 10 students, and there they are. So the principal said to me, how should we choose the students? And I said, I never choose the students. You have to choose the students. So one principal said, why would you do that? I said, when I was a teacher, I was kind of almost like a cabinet member, the advisor or an advisory team to the principal. And I used to always see that the principal had his own little collection of students that he would kind of help out or follow. So I said, wouldn't it be cool if the principal had the ability to pick the kids? Because he does have those kids. And the principal chose these young ladies. So I said to the young ladies, I'm going to need to train you to be a junior astronaut, a junior engineer, and a junior scientist. So then I had to run over to Dr. Williams and I'd say, Dr. Williams, I've got 22 extremely bright adults. And I'm the scientist guy. I'm probably not the best guy to bring the whole team of 22 together because they're gifted in all of their different areas. And you have such a kind, warm mannerism about yourself. Would you bring the team together? I knew he was extremely busy, and I was just taking a chance. And then he said, yes. So these girls are being trained to be junior astronauts, junior engineers, junior scientists. And soon, there will be a new program added to all of this, and that's the program of becoming a jet pilot. My dream was always to have my own research center so I could do work just like this. I thought that the public schools needed research centers like that so we could feed data into the system, especially as you were testing different things out in academics and now technology. So I got blessed. I started working with Dr. Williams, and then all of a sudden, we got the world's greatest offer. When you live in California, space is a big deal. Real estate is a big deal. So the Ontario International Airport said, we would like to provide six gigantic hangars and the airport support and UC Riverside's support because they're putting together a brand-new space program, and we would like your Tiger Teams to be a showcase for that. So I said, okay. I got to think this through. It's going to need a business plan. So Dr. Williams agreed to do that plan. And we are grateful for that. So here we go. Because we're working with foreign countries, we need to do science, technology, engineering, visual and performing arts. I used to work for Apple Computer, and visual and performing arts is what helped us sell everything. So we brought that into this program. Mathematics, design, and then computer languages and foreign languages. Young ladies, how many languages do you speak on the computer? Could you volunteer an answer for me? Please come up to the mic. Come up for a second. Yes. Come up here. Okay. How many languages do you know?
In school, we worked with robots a lot. And then I'm starting to learn C++ just because in robotics, the club I am in, we are starting to use that for programming our robots.
C++ in high school? That's what the big guys are doing. That's a big deal. That's like graduating from college, just because you know that language. That means she can program machines and robots with no difficulty. But you did something else that was absolutely amazing that I have to bring to everyone's attention. I went up to this young lady, and I said, I got this robot part, and it's really a pain. Every time we break this part, I have to send to England to get it. And then I have to wait eight weeks for it to come from England. And then she said, could I, no, you, I'm not going to say it. You tell them what happened. You take over.
So he came up to me and said that he wanted, or that it took a while to get this part. So then I was suggested to go to the computer and then 3D model it. So at school, we have a software called SolidWorks that usually we use to just make things in class for class projects. But then I decided to help him and actually create this part and then actually print it. So now, after I went on to the software and I 3D modeled it, the exact replica or as close as I could get, I printed it on a 3D printer. And then I gave it to him, and now if he ever wants to, he can print more, and then he doesn't have to go order it from a faraway place.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is the greatest commercial the Long Beach Unified School District could ever have. Your students know how to use SolidWorks, and they have the machines to make any part that I request. They're speaking C++, so they're speaking to my machines. We all went to high school. I mean, do you see what just happened here in just a couple of seconds? Thank you. I'll take you off the hot seat. Because of the Common Core state standards, I can work with our students in Providence, Rhode Island. I can work with students all over the United States because we have a common area. This is wonderful. This happened to the state of California. I was in Atlanta, Georgia, speaking just like this, and I was praising the Common Core standards, and I was almost run out of the building. So we've got work to do nationwide, but the Common Core state standards was a big breakthrough for me because now I have a common language for the other Tiger Teams across the country. In the areas of the Next Generation science standards, I was working with your science department here in the district. And I said, the best way I could help is by completing these different areas and making sure that these kids had those kinds of skills. So if you did your part by teaching the great lessons, then I could do my part by having the kids rehearse this in a high-motivational, space-science kind of a way. So it became a nice little intellectual partnership. Every student in the program was given an astronaut notebook because CAMHS worked with me first, and then McBride worked with me second. So I didn't want to waste the work that happened at CAMHS, so I made a continuation from CAMHS to McBride. All of the kids' work is in those books, and they, astronaut number six sitting here, got to work with astronaut number six at CAMHS and see all of the astronaut notes. They could share notes. And so when I go from here to SARO, kids at SARO Academy will be able to see, do the same thing. They'll be able to benefit from the continuation of the academics. We needed to create junior medical school because we said, if I were to send you on the eight-month journey to Mars and someone got sick, what do we do? So we included that training in the program. Sometimes it worked, sometimes it didn't. But we knew that we were working on sophisticated humanoid robots. They could make the parts underneath the robot, and the college students could put the beautiful finish on top of the robot on top. When I was teaching at CAMHS, right after that, I went to Ireland. And when I went to Ireland, my doctor said he would like to monitor my heart while I was in the United States and while I was in Ireland. One of the big breakthroughs that happened with the Mars program is he was able to do that. He was able to monitor my heart while I was running all over Ireland. And now he can monitor my heart while I'm on the planet Mars. Those gigantic breakthroughs in medicine came from the Mars program. Okay. Engineers are wanted. There's a shortage of young ladies, so I was happy to recruit young ladies into the And here's how it happened. Four young ladies from McBride walked up to me and said, how do we get in this program? I was exhibiting at McBride. I was helping out Cal State Long Beach because there's a shortage of electrical engineers. So I'm standing there, and these four young ladies, I said to them, you know, you're not in my flight path for any of this. The only way you can pull this off is to talk to your school principal. So who was the person that walked into the principal's office? Please come up here. I told them, never volunteer. Please tell the Senate and the House Committee how you got the principal, how you talked the principal into getting me down there, giving you a free fellowship and getting these young ladies in education. You tell them in your voice.
So we scheduled a meeting with our principal, and we basically told him, there's a wonderful offer from Mr. Barbosa to have this fellowship. And he, we told him that we would like some girls to be a part of it because there's a lack of girls in engineering. So he was like, he was perfectly on board, and he contacted Mr. Barbosa and Dr. Williams, and he scheduled an appointment to meet with them. And he created this program for us. And he talked to Mr., or yeah, Mr. Barbosa, and we had this week.
Thank you very much. So in other words, you did a good job giving them a good education. They were able to walk into the principal's office and give a convincing argument, and here I am, standing in front of you. If they go to Mars and we work with CAMHS, McBride, and SARO, what science experiments would we do on Mars? There they are. We were able to convince Stanford University to let us use some special research so we could put that on little, small robotic probes so we could play out this scenario on Earth. And we did. These are the kinds of things we built. We needed a communications system, so we put together Kids Talk Radio Science. The editor-in-chief of AdAstra magazine said, if any one of these young ladies is brave enough to be the first high school student to write for the professional AdAstra magazine, he would publish them. So I can't force them to do this. All I can do is lay out the opportunity and hope and pray one of them takes advantage of this. Another situation. Kids Talk Radio in Antarctica. We can do research on Mars in Antarctica, and we can find meteorites there if we went on a field trip there. It's cold in Antarctica, and it is also cold on Mars. So it's a perfect place to get all bundled up to do our research. I'm not going to stop until I can get kids to do projects like that. We needed Mission Control, so we put together our monitors, and we set it up with software, and now we're communicating to all of these different countries. So if you go on Google right now and you go Kids Talk Radio Abu Dhabi, you'll see all of the work that we're doing in Abu Dhabi right now. So they get to publish on all of these channels. So if I needed to work with more kids other than 10, I would work with the Common Core state standards in the area of language arts, and we would publish. We would communicate all over the world because we have the technology. It's here. The very first Kids Talk Radio team came right out of Long Beach Unified School District, and USC allowed us to go to High School Journalism Day. So I would take the kids from Long Beach to USC, and we would train them how to be investigative journalists. The biggest breakthrough from the Mars program is this. Special software so you can manufacture anything. So if you want to bring manufacturing back to the United States, Long Beach has already done it. You've got Haas machines all over the district. These girls know how to speak the language of machines. So all of a sudden, manufacturing is back in the United States. I did not have to go to England to get the part anymore. Please tell everyone in Washington, DC, you figured it out. So speaking of Washington, DC and the military, the military would like to join us for the astronaut part of things because we need help on the aviation part of things. So here's the CAMHS Tiger Team, the first Tiger Team. There were three girls and these boys, and the girls were at lunch, and the other girl was taking the picture. But now, this is the McBride Tiger Team. That's what it looks like. This is the SARO Tiger Team. This team is going to join me this Saturday at the VA Hospital as we do the Second Annual Robotics Showcase. This is the South Korean Tiger Team. I got a call from USC, and they said, would you come down and talk to the South Koreans about Tiger Teams? So I did. This is the USC college-level team of engineers. This is your Long Beach USD Science Fair. I went there and made many, many contacts. I couldn't believe how big that science fair was, and I couldn't believe how much the parents loved it. So I had a chance... So I had a chance because I'm the guy that's on the outside of the district, so I can walk around, nobody knows who I am, and they praised the work that was done. This is an incredible event that you have once a year. So, I got to meet at that science fair, great place to network, by the way. I got to meet the principal and a parent who happened to be a top-level engineer. So they invited me to go and visit SARO, and I saw it for the first time on the inside. This is what it looked like at that science fair, just parents all over the place. There was a lot of interest. Got to meet people from ABC Unified, came over to your science fair to check it out, and then I got to meet them, and I went over to ABC and did some work there. Cal State Long Beach, this is my Tiger Team of all adult engineers. So when I need help, I have to solve a problem, this is where I go. A lot of my work as an astronaut team leader is on my phone. And then, one day, I was working with the young ladies, and I had my phone out, and I told them that on my phone, I have everything for the Mars program, and in addition to all of that, I have the special codes that I've been teaching you. And so for the first time, these young ladies got to hear this. They, I talked about the theory, we built all the machines, but they never knew that in an emergency situation, this is what would happen. So I told them, "Bring the whole team together. You know the code." But the only difference was the rate that the code was coming during an emergency. So ladies, what happened when that happened? What happened? Anybody want to volunteer and answer, or should I? Okay. They couldn't believe the rate because this was the first time they had ever heard Mars code in their life. So once they found out that that was an emergency communication system, then it really got What would happen if I sent this group to SpaceX tomorrow for a job interview? Well, everyone that showed up had good grades. Everyone that showed up had graduated from college. But how many had drive? Look at all of those other skills that they were looking at SpaceX. So I said, "Wow, I better start teaching that stuff in the Tiger Team program." And we did. When you graduate, you look like this. With the Ontario International Airport, we were blessed. I'm running the astronautics side of things, and then we have a real jet pilot running the aviation side. So now these kids, for the first time, will have aviation and astronautics in the same This is the equipment that you would take aboard the International Space Station, especially the yellow case. So we made sure we had yellow cases for every student in the program. And inside those cases were everything that they would need to do all of the science experiments and build all of the projects. These students took these cases home every night for homework, and would I be correct in saying that you worked through the night, many of the nights? So imagine, it's summer, it's summer vacation, bunch of young ladies in high school are willing to sit with me from eight o'clock in the morning to 2:30 in the afternoon, and then go home and work all night. Motivation. America's in 26th place in science. But if we do that, we won't be in 26th place in science anymore as a nation. So, this is what's in those kits. Everyone had a notebook. In my office at my home, I have these notebooks, and I'm preparing the notebooks to go to SARO. So I've got, I've got McBride in there, I've got CAMHS in there, and now I'm preparing the lessons for when I go to SARO. So student number six over here can see the progression. I told everyone that it's hard work becoming a scientist and an astronaut. You've really got to hit the books. So we have all of the books, and we put them in their cases. Every once in a while, we'll get to work with the college students. So the rocket builders at UCLA, USC, Cal State Long Beach, and UNLV in Las Vegas said, "They have the rockets, they have permission to fire them five miles straight up in the air using liquid fuel, and if we built a payload, they would fly it." So now we've got a situation. I said to the Tiger Team, "Can somebody bill me this case?" What happened? Somebody volunteered to bill me this case. Okay, so I want this case, I need this case, you've got to figure out a way to finish that case. Because if we finish it, we get to launch it. So, so now, all of a sudden, there's a relationship between the college and the high school. A serious relationship because there's the rocket. And they have permission from NASA to fire it because they're college guys. These are our college geologists. This is our female astronaut from Russia. Her name is Anastasia Stepanova, and she communicates with us through Kids Talk Radio Russia. So she's communicating with us on a regular basis, and I'm going to get to see her at USC and try to convince her to put together a Tiger Team in Russia that could work with our Tiger Teams in the USA. So, am I working with the Russians? Tell your friends, yes, he is. So here are our students at CAMHS, and now the rest is a photo essay. I'm not going to talk, I'm just going to show you pictures because a picture is a thousand words. The intensity in the kids' faces is interesting. I love Long Beach because there's lots of diversity in Long Beach, and we're powerful because of that diversity. The person sitting down at the desk is one of my examples of surrounding my kids with people with special needs. Now, the person sitting down, he has a special need. He's losing his hearing in a big, big way. In such a big way, he dropped out of the program and said, "I can't go on anymore, I can't help you anymore." But who is he? Well, he's an astrophysicist, and he's the person that wrote the formula so you can tell if global warming, if the temperature's going up and down. That's the person that wrote the software for us to do that. Lives in Long Beach, volunteered to help me. I cried like a baby when he left. This is USC being visited by Australia. So the students in Australia come into USC, taking a good look at things so they can get involved in engineering. This is our group right here before you. There they are. Those special red lab units are, so they can use the special tools and materials used in outer space. We got a donation of those materials, and they got to touch them and work with them and manipulate them. Here we go. I really stressed handwriting at a real high level, both printing and cursive. I said, "In an emergency situation, with all of the communication out, you would have to write on a piece of paper, hold it up in front of a camera, and that'd be the only way you could communicate with Earth." So what kind of handwriting do you want to put up there now when the oxygen's going to go out in an hour unless you get specific instructions from Earth? That was my handwriting program. The kids had beautiful handwriting. My wife was kind enough to help me out because you can't do all this by yourself. I got wonderful volunteers, former administrators.
She's in the back.
Is she in the back? Yes, and she's a product of Long Beach. We have two children, Cynthia Barbosa and David Barbosa. They both graduated from Long Beach. One is the city planner, David, and he's the city planner in Lakewood. And my daughter Cynthia Barbosa was on the United States National Volleyball Team as she worked from Long Beach to try to be one of the Olympic members. So here we go. There's your team. Got to watch my clock because I know I don't want to go over here. And there they are, busy at work. This whole business of people with special needs. The head electrical engineering engineer is from Cal State Long Beach. He's the president of the Robotics Society of Southern California. He volunteered to come over and help me, and when he did, we had to make sure that he could get in and out of the facility with his wheelchair, and because you were compliant in all of the different areas, it was easy for him to get in and out of the district, from parking his car, to going to the bathroom, to working throughout the lab, the whole nine yards. We thank you for, for doing all of that. So here we are, two professors from Cal State Long Beach joining me to help train these young ladies. There are the wonderful Haas machines that you have. This is the wonderful instructor that was willing to share his lab, his equipment, and everything over at McBride, and I told them, "I'm putting your picture in the slideshow." So, this is what you were able to produce at McBride or any other school that you have these machines at. All I have to do is call for the part, and there it is. So there's our young lady making the part that I requested. She put it in that device, and the rest was history. Then they got excited about what the college people were making. So we had this wonderful collaboration between the college and the high school. Then we had the robot teach one of the classes. Would you get the robot out of one of the cases? Yeah, out of that bottom case, and get that guy ready. Okay, so here we are at SARO, similar machines, a lot of interoperability going from one school to the next because we can send files, we can send information. It's wonderful the way you have it set up in the district, especially for an outsider like me just passing through. So that's what it looks like, lot of work. And then, the Ontario International Airport, the gift that dropped out of the sky. So we have the support of the airport, we have the support of UC Riverside, and I asked Dr. Williams to come out, so he came out. We took a look at the airport. Nice facility, ready to go for our Tiger Teams, and the hangars are so big that we can fly our drones right inside the hangars. We never have to leave the building. So now we have this aviation program and all of that. Okay, thank you. So here we are at the end of our program, and we have a fully autonomous...
No.
Okay. Good. That'll be good. When the robot starts to speak.
It's okay, it's all...
Okay, very good. Okay. Please, Mr. Robot, wake up and take care of everything. And young ladies, we're going to get out of this program over here. Keep one eye on the robot, and I'm going to get us out of this program so we can stay on schedule. And, young ladies, your slides are right there on the desktop. I'll let you take care of that while I keep my eye on this guy because you have to keep your eye on him. Okay. I'm going to pull him out. Oh, I shouldn't. We're on television. I shouldn't make those adjustments. Okay. So here he is. He's on the table, he's ready to wake up, he's going to give me a signal any moment. So think of this, I'm going to Mars, he's going with me. But there are three of them. So now I have to coordinate three humanoid robots. Thank God everything's working. I'm going to need you to stand up. Someone, please come up and hold my mic. I told you not to complain. Okay. Stand up here, got to make sure you don't fall off this table. Okay. Now, this is a fully autonomous humanoid robot that speaks 12 foreign languages. He's designed to work with us on the Tiger Team. He can actually do science experiments and a whole bunch of things. So, camera people, are you okay? I'm about to turn them on. Here we go.
What do you want me to do?
Presentation.
Presentation. Let's talk about me.
So we trained the robot to be a teacher, so he's going to teach. Gives me a chance.
Hello, my name is Al. I'm a humanoid robot imagined and manufactured by Aldi Baron Robotics. I come with a software and I'm fully programmable. I'm autonomous, and I can connect to the internet through Wi-Fi. I can recognize your face, answer your questions, play music, grab objects, and even play soccer like a pro. I've more than 3,000 brothers and sisters and use all around the world in universities and research laboratories. Do you want more technical details?
Yes, tell me everything.
Counting every articulation in my body, I have 25 degrees of freedom. The sun is located in my torso, allow me to detect obstacles that I might encounter. My two cameras give me an enlarged field of vision. Thanks to them, I can look right in front of me or at my feet, you know, to avoid walking where I should not. The four microphones around my head allow me to detect the origin of sounds nearby. Oh, well, I think about it. There are four force-sensitive resistors under each of my feet combined with my inertial sensor. They help me keep my balance. I can use some LEDs to express various emotions and interact with you.
I haven't seen you.
No. And you, on the other hand, can use my tactile sensors on the head, for example, to pass me some information. Well, I guess that's enough for the moment. Thank you for listening to me.
Bob, can you get him to do the Michael Jackson?
Have we got time for a robot to do Michael Jackson?
Very quick.
Okay.
I'm recording it.
Okay. So you're, okay. All right. I'm more famous for a robot that does Michael Jackson than any of the work that I did with NASA and outer space and any of that stuff. So you go through your whole career, you do all of the studying, and then you get famous for being Michael Jackson. So you better not let me down.
Do you want something?
Thriller.
Thriller.
So there it is. I came all the way down to the school board, and now, all you're going to remember is me for is Michael Jackson. Okay, I'm going to... Okay, I'm going to put him to rest and young ladies, please take over. I could use a break.
Do you want something?
Go to rest.
Go to rest? I am going to rest, just pat my head when you want to wake me up.
So if you ever hurt your back, this is how we get down. Thank you.
Hello, we are a part of the Tiger Team, as you may have known. And we are going to talk about our experience throughout the whole entire week-long fellowship and how it has shaped us now.
So the mission that we were assigned with was putting us in the hypothetical situation that we landed on Mars. And this was pretty interesting for us as we've never really worked together, even though we all attend the same school and we've been through three years of high school together already. We've mainly been in a male-dominated engineering program, so we don't really have chances for female engineers to come and work together. So the first thing that we did was that we were able to learn more about Mars, so we were able to research what interested us. I got to research some of the geology of Mars, which was pretty cool. We also got to do a lot of mini projects, some which were found in our cases that we were giving that corresponded to our numbers and some which Mr. Barbosa assigned us such as a Morse code reader and the Arduino robot. We were also taught how to behave in Mars conditions such as through the Mars stations where you don't really get to see what you're doing and you have big bulky gloves that you don't really know how to navigate with. So that was pretty interesting, it was an interesting perspective to work from. We got to meet new engineers such as the people from the Robotics Society. And we were also, probably one of the most beneficial parts is that we were able to bond with our fellow women engineers.
So these pictures show the Morse code machines. So we were given a breadboard, wires, a battery, a speaker and a telegraph. And we were told to make our own Morse code machines with the knowledge we have from our classes. And because we took digital electronics in our 10th grade class, we were able to make a series circuit and hook it up altogether and it worked perfectly. So we were able to stand on opposite sides of the room and communicate with each other. And we had a little cheat sheet that had all the letters and the codes in Morse code. So we were able to look at our cheat sheet, see what they're trying to respond to us and then communicate back. And this is a great way for emergencies. So now we know what SOS is in Morse code or different things like that. And we were given a message to shorten it down and it was, there's no more oxygen. And if you put, we have no more oxygen in Morse code, that's a long message. So we shortened it down to no O2, which is oxygen in chemistry. And now it's a lot quicker in Morse code to send to NASA if we need help and we can't breathe.
The Arduino robot was a robot that was previously built by the first Tiger Team at CAMs. And we were each given one of these robots to reverse engineer. So basically, we had to take it all apart and put it back together again and hope that it worked. This was a pretty fun experience because it took most of the day. We were given it on the third day, I believe, and it took a very, it was a very long process. But we did manage to complete it pretty quickly because we took a lot of documentation about it and we had the notes from the CAMs engineers from the first CAMs Tiger Team that kind of helped us through it. Yeah, for me personally, it was a little bit difficult because I don't have a lot of robotics experience. But being able to do this in a supportive environment where I had a bunch of other of my fellow engineers that were kind of going through the same thing, it made it a lot more fun and it was definitely an experience.
Documentation is a huge part of engineering. So every single day, we wrote down in our notebooks every single thing that we did, even where we screwed in a part, the exact spot, like we measured everything just so if we were to leave, someone would take our spot and be able to do our whole entire process exactly or even better than us. And so like Mr. Barbosa was saying, we got our notebooks from CAMs. And so we, the first day, we looked through our notebooks and see what did CAMs do and what can we do better than CAMs. And so we, like Stephanie was saying, we took apart the robot and put it back together. And a lot of that was the guidance of the documentation that CAMs wrote down in their notebooks. And so we wrote even more documentation so that the next Tiger Team after us can look back and see, oh, she put this wire in this spot and she plugged it into this spot. So it will be really beneficial in the end. And also, we had a lot of experience with documentation in our engineering classes at McBride. But this taught us how to use our documentation in a real-life situation and how to use it in a work situation. Because we have it in our classes, we write down notes for ourselves. But this way was teaching us how to write notes for other people without communicating one-on-one.
We were given the chance to meet with other engineers. In the first picture, we met with Ms. Lauren. She used to be a former student of Mr. Barbosa's and she was actually on one of his earlier teams, I believe. And she was pretty helpful. She was very sweet and she walked through the program with us. And even though, she helped us with some of our activities such as we had like a knot time practice and she helped us to work with that. And it was pretty nice getting to know her and getting to like meet her experiences because she had gone through the same things that we were going through during that week. And then in the second picture, we met with some members of the Robotics Society. We met with the president and I believe his secretary. He also is a professor at Cal State Long Beach. And they showed us a bunch of what, a bunch of things and what they were working on and they told us a little bit about themselves. They gave us a lot of helpful career advice, especially since we're all looking to go into engineering. So they were telling us like what we have to do, what we have to study and then especially what we, like what we needed to know if we were going into this certain type of fields.
And because all these engineers talked to us, we were inspired greatly. We have all these machines at our school and not a lot of us are certified on these machines. And so this really inspired us to be certified on those machines and go create our own projects. And I know that I am currently in the process of making my own projects with our 3D printers because one of the professors was showing us that he is 3D modeling C-3PO in the exact size as the movie. And so we got to see how his process was going and all that. And on the right, that's a tiny little robot on the table and he was dancing to Staying Alive by the Bee Gees. And it was a lot of fun and we got to learn about what codes he was using and what languages he used to code that robot and what type of process he took to build it and everything. So we got inspired to make our own designs and our own projects in the future.
Being in this fellowship, it has definitely helped us to get closer to our goals, whether we want to work with NASA, SpaceX or Boeing. And especially, it gives us a lot of opportunities that we're capable of working in an industry such as the aerospace industry. Because this fellowship, it covered a lot of different types of engineering and showed how it related to the aerospace industry in specifics. We got to do electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, a little bit of civil engineering, some of it. For myself, I wanted to do architectural engineering and this is especially beneficial that it's, what I've learned through the program is that it can be used to help to build a Mars colony. So I thought that was pretty interesting because not only, it brought us closer together as a team and it also brought us closer together to our futures.
So in the end, we want to say thank you for letting us have this opportunity to come talk to you guys, but also to be a part of this fellowship and get a lot of more knowledge and have more opportunities. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, young ladies, for going with me to summer school and then doing all the work that you needed to do to prepare for this. They put the presentation together on their own. I told them that I wanted them to do it totally on their own. So, thank you.
Bob, just talk about the young lady with disability who was part of the team.
Yeah, there was a young lady with a profound learning disability in that team. But as far as these girls were concerned, they described her as one of the other engineers. Well, what we did is we knew, and I often tell the story of what would happen if we were on the way to Mars and I got the disability. I'm the guy that knows how to run the rocket and this and that. And all of a sudden, I've got a severe visual perception problem because the eyeballs in my head are getting larger as I get closer to Mars. And I can't hear so well anymore. So now, your lead instructor has this disability. So I thought it would be great that we would mainstream people with disabilities into the program so we could work under all of those conditions and get to be partners with all kinds of people. And so it was seamless. They just thought she was another one of the engineers.
And what was her role with respect to the team, Bob?
Because in space, we have to use fine motor coordination. We had those red boxes where we put our hands in the gloves. And once our hands are in those gloves, we had to do all kinds of things. It was just like there was an emergency, there's radiation leaking all throughout the compartments and we need to be under those secure, we need to keep working but under those secure conditions. Any other questions?
You know, earlier, we were, part of the earlier sessions, we were looking at the data on our kids in terms of performance in math, English language arts and so forth. And you and I had spoken earlier about being able to work with kids as far down as 3rd grade, kids of color, and being able to use this kind of an approach to get them excited about math and science.
Yes, yes, well, you want me to expound on that?
Would you?
Yeah. Yeah. The way our students go through mathematics is really, really tough if there's not someone at home that can help you.
There you go.
You see? So what happens is you in the district just teach your heart out and you're missing that little backup piece. So you work even harder and harder to try to achieve your goals and get your numbers where you need to be. So in a research program like this, one of the areas was to be able to do that kind of research. One thing I learned at Apple Computer was to think different. They did me a big favor by putting me in that kind of mode. So when I look at space mathematics and I look at general mathematics and then I look at someone trying to get this sense of numbers. You know how when you're out in the real world, there's other people around you and they just have this sense of numbers? You just throw a few numbers out and they've got an answer. Sometimes our kids don't have that sense of numbers. You know, there is one more thing that I need to say that you triggered my memory. When I woke up this morning, my wife said, "You got to see what's on the front page of the LA Times." So I said, "Okay, let's take a look at it." So I'm taking a look at the front page of the LA Times and a new group has come out and they basically said they don't want to see any more things like this with young ladies just being in groups of young ladies. So I didn't have time to read behind the scenes and the articles and different things like that. And this was an experiment. And in this experiment, I discovered something. My sample is small, but I discovered that they had the ability to reverse engineer technical, mechanical things in an extraordinary fast way. Remember, I kept commenting to you saying, "How did you guys finish that stuff ahead of schedule?" They were way ahead of, they were like two days ahead of schedule. And Bethany, she had never worked with a robot before and she was just slightly behind the group. So I said to myself, "What would happen if I had a sample of 10,000? I wonder what the numbers would look like then." So that's why I love teaching, that's why I love teaching and research. Thank you, everyone. I probably went on a so far over schedule, I'll never be back again. But other than that, this was wonderful.
Thank you, Bob. Questions?
How do we do more and/or expand and/or provide more of these opportunities for our students?
Well, if I hit the lottery, I'm definitely coming back to Long Beach to help you out. So it becomes a matter of finances. The way the district and all districts are set up, you don't have the extra money for these kinds of things. You really have to bend over backwards. So what we, we knew that. So what we try to do is to try to make all of this available to you. One of the things you could do is partner with us as we go after the aerospace industry to get you funding for this kind of thing. That's something you could do and it wouldn't cost you a cent. It's just a matter of having the right kind of meanings, getting the right kind of people in the room and telling them the truth. You know, they pick up the newspaper, find out you have a budget of $2 billion. So they're saying, "Oh, those guys are all set." But when you look at the dollars that are added, that are positioned for each kid, you barely have enough left over for an extra pencil and you might run out of paper before the year's out. So you're really stretched. So we, we may have to think different for how funds can get brought in so you can have programs like this. So Dr. Williams is working with us very hard and trying to rethink all of this and get everybody situated. But we have 22 really gifted people. We've got real estate to beat the band. We have a commitment of people to try to figure out, how can we help public education? Because your job's not easy. You're like me, you have to work with whoever comes through the door. And you do a marvelous job at doing it, given the budget that you have.
Bob, I wanted to talk a little bit about the student with disability. Because, and I wish Stephanie were here. When I had a chance to tour their work, a lot of the kids that are coming through that program are being trained to work in, as clerks in stores and, you know, and veterinarian assistants, I'm sorry, staff in veterinarian offices. But what you had that young lady doing in this program was way far above that in terms of the, her visibility, her work. And that's why I wanted you to talk about that a little bit. Because, you know, in my thinking, that's another opportunity for us as a district to bring in that component for training some of our youngsters to work in this area.
Okay, maybe I can answer your question in this way. We have such powerful software today that almost each piece of software is almost a vocation. Real powerful. I'll give you an example. When SpaceX launched one of their rockets, it went all the way up into outer space. And when that rocket lands, you know, it lands itself. And then they look over the rocket very carefully and they might find that some of the aluminum is buckling. Well, it may have cost $3 million to send it up and discover that the aluminum is buckling. So if they run another experiment, they would have to come up with another $3 million to run that test. Or you could do the whole thing with software and figure the whole thing out without spending the $3 million. So the moral of the story is, if you have, my motto is, all children are gifted. It's up to me to find out where they're gifted. So if the kid is gifted in technology and using software, then we kind of work with those gifts and see if we can make a STEM connection. So that's, that's the one scenario that in an action research lab, you could play out those scenarios where I don't have to come here and just say, "I'm guessing." When I come before you, I can show you data. That's what we learned from Dr. Williams. He was constantly honest, to show them the numbers. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
I just want to thank the students for being here. You know, that takes a lot to, you know, come before the board, executive staff, retelevized, all that kind of thing. And you did a wonderful job, all of you. And also, Mr. Barbosa, thank you for highlighting our students, for choosing our Long Beach students, and also females because this is the area that we need to build the most. And so that's where our greatest need is in engineering.
Thank you very much for that comment.
And may I ask that each one of the girls come up, introduce themselves? This is a televised program, so we'd like to immortalize you in some way.
Please come up. Gives me a chance to take your picture.
Hi, I'm Alex Chin.
I'm Nimsey Torres.
It's okay if you say a few words about yourself.
I'm Sethany Orne.
I am Courtney Topman.
I am Boyana Wan.
And I'm McKenna Garcia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are some of us that aren't here. There were 11 girls, but yeah. So there is more to our team than just what you see here. Just want to highlight that it's not just us doing it, it's more people.
Anybody else want to comment? Given, Bob, given the kind of experience they had in that one week that you were with them, would you say they can go to any college or university in this nation with that kind of experience?
Well, you know, think of these girls going to Stanford University and they're sitting in front of the admissions officer or at USC. What they could tell that admissions officer about what they did beyond the high school situation could be pretty impressive, especially if they articulated all of the different scenarios that they played out. So I think that would be valuable in setting them apart from other students.
What about your... The kids' Tiger Team from at CAMS? Are they out in colleges and universities or do you know where they're...
Yes. What happened at CAMS was they were seniors. And so they graduated and they all went on to college. So sometimes when I work at McBride, I'll get a parent from CAMS working somewhere as a volunteer there and they'll tell me about what's happening to those other students that have gone on. And that's the sad part. I used to teach elementary and I loved it because it was like the kids were with you forever. But it's sad in high school when they graduate. I can't handle that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Bob. And Eric, thank you very much for coming out and helping. Appreciate it very much. All right. Chris, our other person did not show. So he's not here.
We still have another time.
Yeah, so...
Maybe we can meet tomorrow morning.
So does anyone else have any questions that they want to just...
It's not me, Dr. [inaudible].
Thank you so much.
Someone wants to talk.
Yeah.
They can meet at 8:30.
8:30? Okay. We are done for the day, folks. Tomorrow at 8:30 here. Thank you. Thank you very much.